Hello, everybody, and welcome to the Retail Now 2023 Town Hall. I'm Jim Roddy, the President and CEO of the RSPA. We are so glad you've joined us today, and we're so glad that we're just a little over 100 days out from Retail Now, always the highlight of the year in the Retail IT channel. So I know we have lots of members joining us on the call today, but we also have some folks who aren't familiar with the RSPA. So for those folks, we're North America's largest community of VARs, software developers, vendors and distributors in the retail, restaurant, grocery and cannabis verticals, and we're a fit for any organization that's serious about growth in those markets. So many of our companies have been members for decades, and we frequently add startup tech companies because we accelerate their growth and they see the massive ROI that an RSPA membership offers. So if you're serious about growth in the Retail IT channel, you want to register for Retail Now at the URL that you see on the screen there, and you also want to join the RSPA, and you can do that by emailing membership@gospa.org. Again, that's membership@gospa.org. All right, so to kick off our Town Hall, let's meet our presenters. We have my colleagues Ashley Nagy, Vice President of Member Services, and Kathy Meter, the Vice President of Education Services, and we're going to give you a tour of what Retail Now is all about in terms of an overview for folks who aren't as familiar with it, and then also a lot of the new things that we have going on this year at the show. So Kathy, if you can start us off and give us some background on some housekeeping.
Sure, thanks, Jim. For today's call, we have muted all of the lines. We've received a number of questions ahead of this call, and we will answer as many as possible at the conclusion of the presentation. If you have questions during today's call, please submit those questions using the function on your control panel as shown in the slide here, and we will be recording today's session. So everybody who registered will receive the link to the recording as well as a summary of the questions and answers as a follow-up. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ashley Nagy, VP of Member Services. Ashley?
Thanks, Kathy. Hi, everyone. Excited to be here today and share more with you about Retail Now 2023. But first, we'd like to do a big thank you to our sponsors. Without their generous support, events like Retail Now and a lot of the things that we do at the RSPA would not be possible. So a big thank you to our Retail Now 2023 event sponsors, Blue Star, Cardknox, CoCard, General Credit Forms, Quick POS, Linga, Shift4 and Tabit. Again, a big thank you. And then for our package sponsors, our annual sponsors, our Platinum Package sponsor, Blue Star. Gold Package sponsors are CoCard, Heartland, ScanSource and Star Micronics. Silver Package sponsors are Elo, Epson, Ingenico, MicroTouch and Truist. And our Bronze sponsors are AutoStar, CRS, DataCap, DataLogic, Evo, Fortis, Ingram Micro, Kitchen Armor, PayIQ, Shift4, TD Senex, Toshiba, Truist and Worldpay. Again, a big thank you to those package sponsors. And then, as you can see here, we have our top five communities and our media and association partners. A big thank you to those that support our Canadian community, our cannabis community, our ISV community, our W2W community and our Next Gen community, as well as those association and media partners. Again, a big thank you for all you do to support the RSPA.
Great, thank you, Kathy, and thank you, Ashley. And a lot of these communities, we'll be talking in a little bit, will be gathering in person at Retail Now. So the agenda for today, what we're going to cover during this Town Hall, first, why would somebody attend Retail Now, right? Who is Retail Now targeted for? Then also, we'll give a registration exhibitor and sponsorship update, all sorts of good news there. Also, what to expect from a networking standpoint at the show. Kathy's going to run us through some Retail Now education highlights. We just finalized most of the breakout sessions. Then also talk about the 75th Anniversary Celebration. RSPA was founded, our roots go all the way back to 1948, the ICRDA Independent Cash Registered Dealers Association. So in 2023, we're celebrating our 75th year, and we have all sorts of festivities planned for Retail Now. We'll also talk about some attendance perks related to the show being held in Orlando. And then finally, we'll turn it over to you for Q and A. And back to what Kathy mentioned earlier, drop any question or comment in the Q and A function that you have there on your screen at any time during this presentation, and then we're going to answer as many as we have time for at the end of the program. All right, so that's what's happening on the Town Hall, and I'm going to turn it over to Ashley now. Ashley, can you talk about, again, for folks who haven't been to a Retail Now, what is Retail Now all about?
Absolutely. So Retail Now is the place where the industry meets. When we think about who attends Retail Now, we never have any end users at the show or in any of the community or committee functions that we do here at the RSPA. But who you will see there are VARs, value-added resellers, ISOs, MSPs, ISVs or software companies, vendors of hardware, payment processors, distributors, anybody and everybody that either makes manufacturers or resells some sort of technology that's going to help make a restaurant, a retail store, a grocery store, or even a cannabis dispensary run in all of the niche markets under those umbrellas as well. So think in terms of, you know, you want to be able to see what's new, what's different, what's cutting edge, what should I be aware of, what are the obstacles that everybody else is running into? That's what you're going to find at Retail Now this year, and we're going to dive deeper into some of those specifics. And now I'll turn it over, excuse me, before I do that, let's talk a little bit about Retail Now 2022. So this past year's Retail Now and what we saw there to put it into comparison of what you can expect this year. So for Retail Now 2022, we had 168 exhibitors. We sold out the show floor. It was a 51% increase over 2021 when we were coming out of COVID. Nearly half of those exhibitors were ISVs, so some sort of software technology. We saw over 400 VAR or reseller attendees at that event. We saw over 300 ISVs in attendance, and we had almost 50 first-time exhibitors. So I want to talk about, you know, what's new and what's trending. That's what we saw at this past year's event with a little over 1,500 attendees, and we are expecting an even larger turnout as we get ready for Retail Now 2023. And to take us through that, I'm going to turn it over to Kathy Meter to walk us through the Retail Now agenda. Kathy?
Thanks, Ashley. This year, we're going to kick off the event on Sunday, July 30. We'll start late afternoon with our first community reception. That will be followed by our welcome or first look reception. That will once again be held in on the show floor from 5:30 to 7:00. And then we'll follow up with a second community event for Sunday. And once those events are over, you can join vendors during their receptions and their get-togethers. We'll start Monday morning with community breakfast. The expo hall will be open from 8:00 to 1:00. Both breakfast and lunch will be served on the expo hall, on the expo hall floor. And then, once the expo hall closes, we'll move to general section as well as our education breakouts. After the education ends at 6:00, we will have some time to celebrate the RSPA 75th Anniversary with a special anniversary reception. Those events will again be followed by vendor events at the very end of the day and late evening. And then on Tuesday, we'll have our final event, the community event. The expo hall will be open again from 8:00 to 1:00. Breakfast and lunch will be served on the show floor, and then we'll have another round of education breakouts before we conclude the show at 3:30. It's a packed schedule. There's something for everybody, and we're really looking forward to seeing everybody there. Ashley, do you want to talk a little bit about who people can expect to see?
Absolutely. And as Kathy mentioned, it is something for everybody. So whether you are a VAR, a value-added reseller, an MSP or managed services provider, an ISO, whether you're leading your company or you are on the sales team or the installation team or all of the above, if you're a direct ISV selling direct-to-end users or you're an ISV that's selling through the channel, our vendors, the hardware manufacturers, distributors, everybody here will be participating in not only the show floor and seeing what new technologies are out there, but also where a lot of the magic happens too, whether it's at, you know, as Kathy mentioned, we're going to have a full breakfast every day on the show floor, we're going to have these community events, being able to really network and engage and set elbow to elbow with your peers in the industry or folks that you want to do business with. That opportunity is going to be provided all throughout that event and throughout that agenda. That's why we have such a robust agenda to make sure that there is something for everyone there. And then, you know, as I mentioned earlier, this past year, we saw just over 1,500 attendees. This year, we're going to expect to see somewhere close to 1,700 plus attendees. Registration's off to a fantastic start, and I'm going to talk a little bit more in here in just a moment about the show floor for Retail Now as well. So as we get to that, for the 2022 show, as I mentioned, the show floor did sell out. This year, as of last week, when we created this, we were about 85% of the 2023 booths are sold. That has picked up substantially, so we're nearly 90% sold out on the show floor. We're also going to have new, again, our startup alley for niche and startup ISVs. I think we have two spaces remaining there. And during this event, when that show floor is open, nothing else happens except for that show floor. So we don't have any education sessions going on at the same time. We don't have things that are taking folks off the floor. Everybody there is there to see what's new, what's hot, what's trending and have those conversations there. So we'll have 11 and a half hours of show floor time. That includes our first look reception on Sunday evening, so make sure you get in in time to attend that, as well as some of those community events that we talked about earlier. As I mentioned, the networking, our full breakfast in the morning to get the day going off right, and then a full lunch on the show floor as well. And just to give you kind of a peek at the show floor here, you can see at the back of the show floor, we have that big 75th RSPA Anniversary Booth and all of the tables around it, because we want people to be able to network and engage and drive that show floor traffic as we're having those meals on the show floor. And as you can see, the booths that are highlighted in blue are already secured and sold, and then the ones remaining in the white or the cream color are still available. So if you're thinking about or considering exhibiting at Retail Now, be sure to reach out to us at membership@gospa.org, or you can reach out to myself, and I'm happy to help with next steps for that. So we're just down to, I believe, right at 20 booth spaces remaining for the show. And then a little bit more about that niche and startup alley that I mentioned earlier. So if you are a first-time exhibiting ISV or software solution provider and you're interested in exhibiting, we have a special pricing structure for that first-time exhibitor ISV. And as I mentioned earlier, we have the two spaces remaining. Last year, it sold out, and I can tell you that startup alley was busy, busy, busy the entire show. So it is a great opportunity for folks to, you know, if you're attending there and you're looking for new solutions, that's going to be a hot area as well. And if you're there to showcase your solutions for the first time, this is a great way to get off to a fantastic start. Also, as I mentioned, we don't have any conflicting education sessions or anything going on when the show floor is open, and that goes for meetings as well. So we don't sell meeting spaces to happen off of the show floor during show floor hours. We have the show floor meeting rooms on the show floor. So if you're an exhibitor and you want to have private meetings, we do have private rooms available on the show floor for you to have those one-on-one direct conversations as well. And again, if you have any questions on that, feel free to reach out to us at membership@gospa.org, and we can help you with securing one of those rooms as well. And then next up, as it relates to our vendor meetings, so when the show floor is not happening and the education sessions are not happening, a lot of our vendors like to host trainings, they like to host happy hours and other meetings. We do have space available for our exhibiting vendors to have those functions at Retail Now, and you can also leverage our special pricing on AV and F and B while you're there as well. We help you with coordinate with the hotel to set up your room style and all of those things. So if you're thinking about hosting something, reach out to us. We do have meeting rooms available for those types of events. I just booked, I think it was three or four this week already for some of our vendors that are hosting their evening receptions and maybe some of their trainings ahead of the show start. So reach out to us, and we're happy to help you with that as well. Again, membership@gospa.org. And then, as it relates to our community receptions, so as Kathy mentioned earlier in the agenda, starting off on Sunday afternoon, we're going to have the ISV and cannabis community reception. Great opportunity to network and engage with ISVs in the community as well as those that are focused on the cannabis market. On Monday evening, after the show floor closes, we're going to have our Next Gen Community Reception. This is great for not just next generation leadership, but also next generation technology. I know when we have our calls throughout the year, you know, every other month, and we have folks talk about what are the new trending technologies, what's out there, what, you know, what's important for everybody to know about. A lot of those conversations happen onsite at Retail Now during that Next Gen Community Reception, so hoping you guys plan to attend that. For the Women to Women, the W2W community, we're going to host a breakfast. We did that this past year. It was well-received, and we had a great attendance, so looking forward to seeing everyone in the Women to Women community on that Monday morning for breakfast. That's open to everyone to attend as well. So we'll have a special theme there also. And then for our Canadian Community Breakfast on Tuesday morning, we just left Canada, Jim and I and a couple of others from our team, we were up in Toronto for the Canadian Community Networking Event, and oh my gosh, what a turnout. We were so thrilled with that. And with the Canadian Community Breakfast happening at Retail Now on that Tuesday morning, this is a fantastic opportunity to network with peers in the industry from Canada, as well as those who are looking to launch their businesses in Canada, and a lot of our Canadian members who are looking to break out into the U.S. as well. Fantastic opportunity to network with each other, make some connections, and we'll have some fun there while we're doing that as well. And now I'm going to turn it over to Kathy to walk us through some of the education highlights, because I know that's a big part of what we do at Retail Now as well. Kathy?
Thanks, Ashley. So this year, our general session is going to feature an Industry Leader Insights segment, and that will feature Jay McBane from Canlis, Canlis as well as Michael LeBlanc from Maven Media. This will, the focus of this session will be presence and future industry trends impacting the channel and how our members can position for success. In addition to that, we are excited to once again offer four education blocks throughout the conference. Each of those blocks will be 60 minutes, and they will feature five breakouts. We'll follow educational tracks again, and those tracks this year include VAR and ISV executive education. This track features topics specifically geared towards our VAR and ISV executives. We'll have emerging opportunities. This track will feature content on both trending market opportunities as well as trending technology opportunities. We'll have our sales and customer service track, and these sessions will feature all of our content around sales, marketing and support and customer service. Our Next Gen Technologies, this track is all about technologies that our members need to know about. And then new this year, we will have VAR and ISV growth, and this is content that is designed to help businesses grow and succeed. So as you can see, we've got a great education lineup we're very excited about, and we don't want anybody to miss out. And since you can only be in one place at a time, Ashley, do you want to tell them a little bit about the Bring One More?
Yeah, absolutely. So we tested this out last year at Retail Now, and it was so successful that we are bringing back the Bring One More program. So if you are a VAR reseller, a direct ISV or an exhibiting vendor company, we do have the Bring One More program, which means if you're that VAR, that reseller, you purchased that first pass, the second pass is free. It's a service that we offer for our members to be able to bring somebody else from their team at no cost. And if you're that exhibiting vendor member and you've purchased your booth space, and let's say you have two passes included, the third pass you purchase, the fourth pass is free, because we want you to be able to bring additional attendees as well. So that's a great opportunity, and reach out to us if you have not received your code yet, we'll get that right over to you.
Great, thanks, Kathy.
Now, I'll turn it back over to Jim to take us through the 75th Anniversary.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, no, thank you very much. As I mentioned at the outset, RSPA's celebrating 75 years as an association. We're doing celebrations all year round, kicked it off at our RSPA Inspire Leadership Conference. We also have a website that you can just go to go-rspa.org/75th, so seven-five-th. You can just go visit that, and you get to see a lot of the photos, videos and all sorts of neat things that we're doing as well. But what we're going to be doing at the show at Retail Now, this is really going to be the crown jewel of our 75th Anniversary Celebration. As you saw on the show floor map that Ashley showed earlier, booth number 740 in the back, it's a 20 by 80. What we're going to have back there, the backdrop, is going to be a giant industry and association timeline, so you can kind of walk through the history of the association. We're also going to have a technology museum. We have a great group led by RSP Hall of Famer Dave McCarthy and Alan Hayman, longtime association members, some of the folks, their families built this organization. They are collecting from our members and contributing themselves, cash registers, equipment from over the years, so folks can kind of take a walk through at some of the impactful technology that really, you know, has made a difference and has really helped build this community. Then we're also going to have in there some data about technology of the future, right? 75th Anniversary is in part about looking back and celebrating how great this association has been, but then it's also looking ahead as well in terms of seeing what's around the corner, just like Kathy alluded to with the feature panel that we have with Jay McBane and Michael LeBlanc. Those are two guys aren't necessarily in the Retail IT channel. Michael's a retail strategist, Jay has been in the general channel, but they've been embedded with the RSPA for a year now as appointed advisors to the boards, to the RSPA board, and so they're going to share their unique perspective of what's around the corner as well in that special keynote that we have, right? So we have folks who have that outside perspective, they've been inside, and they're going to be able to share what they've seen. And then, so that's going to be during the day Monday. Monday night, we have a special celebration where we're going to have a commemorative video that we're working on right now that's going to have a lot of members talking about the history of the association, how it impacted them personally and how it impacted their organizations. We're bringing back a lot of inviting, a lot of past HO Whistler Award members, Hall of Fame winners, past board chairs, and so we're going to be able to pay tribute to those folks as well. And they're going to have a special presentation that also, again, takes a look around and talks about what's going to happen in the future as well. Then there's going to be a special scholarship fundraiser. Last year, we raised almost $8,000 onsite, thanks to Ann Maynard and a team of volunteers led by Ann, who collected that money for the RSPA Scholarship Fund. This year, what we're going to do is we have a special giveaway, and so if you go on to go-rspa.org/coin, you'll see right now we're selling a limited edition series of commemorative coins. If you donate $750 to the RSPA Scholarship Fund, you'll receive a framed, a frame certificate. It's also going to have the front and back of the coin there, and the front commemorates the 75th Anniversary. The back has a QR code that'll take you to that 75th Anniversary website. So years down the road, you'll be able to snap that QR code on your phone. We're assuming we're still going to have smartphones and everything like that. As time goes on, you'll be able to visit that 75th Anniversary website that, again, is going to walk down memory lane again. That is live right now. So if you want to donate to that fundraiser, and limited edition coin, there's only 100 that are, that have been made, and so those are being sold currently, and we've already sold a good chunk of them. So if you do want to participate in that fundraiser, go-rspa.org/coin. And again, if you want to visit the 75th Anniversary website, go-rspa.org/75th, so seventy. All right, so that's what we're doing from a 75th Anniversary perspective. And then Kathy, can you talk about some of the attendance perks that Retail Now attendees will experience, because we're so close to Disney being in Orlando?
Sure. So this year, before or after the show, you want to be sure to take advantage of the hotel and the conference amenities and perks. Once again, we will be offering, the hotel will be offering discount Disney park tickets. Those are available right now, and you can find out all the information you need for that on the website for Retail Now. So be sure to visit the website venue page for information on how to get your discounted park tickets. Also, on property, in addition to several really good restaurant outlets, there's also a water park and a full spa. Retail Now attendees receive a discount on spa services, and there is no additional cost for the onsite water park. So lots of good stuff to take advantage of before and after the show.
Great, thank you, Kathy. So Kathy, Ashley and I have shared nothing but good news up until this point, but we do have to give a warning where we say be careful. So you're going to receive, once you register for the show, or if just you've been involved in this industry for any period of time, your name has probably ended up on some lists, and there are third-party hotel offers, list rentals and other potential scams, right? People say, oh, you have to reserve your hotel room for the RSPA. You do it through us, we can get you a special discount. You want to ignore those folks. You'll have folks who say, we have the Retail Now attendee list. No, they don't, because the RSPA is the one who has that. So again, these third parties are not affiliated with the association. Just keep in mind, any communication, whether it's phone, electronic, verbal or print, it's going to come to you directly from the RSPA. And if we could ask you to do, do us a favor, if you do receive one of these scams calling you in terms of saying, I have the Retail Now list, or I'm managing the Retail Now hotel room block, if you could forward that to the RSPA, because we always want to reach out to those folks and give them an all cease and desist and tell them that they shouldn't be engaging in this activity, because they cause a lot of confusion among our, among our memberships. So again, be careful, be aware of those. If you want information on the RSPA, you're going to find it on the official website, and you're going to receive it only from the RSPA. All right, so before we get to our Q and A, like, that was a lot of information that we shared, and we have a bunch of questions that are coming in right now, and so we'll be sure to tackle those. But we want to tell you, like, what steps, where do you go from here? So first step is register, right? We have the early bird registration deadline. You get a discount as an attendee if you register early. That's going on right now, but let's make sure you reserve your spot by visiting the Retail Now website. Then next, what you want to do as well is make sure that you book your hotel room, right? Hotels sold out, not only the show floor sold out last year, the hotel sold out last year. And if you stay onsite at the Gaylord, it's super convenient, because everything is under one giant roof. If you've never been to a Gaylord before, it's like one giant ecosystem. You can walk in there, you know, you get in there for the show on Sunday, and you won't leave again until after Tuesday, right? Everything's under one roof, but you want to make sure that you do book your hotel room at a significant discounted rate. When you see that on the RSPA website, you'll see the significant discounts you get being able to stay at the Gaylord. And so, once you're registered, once you book your hotel and you get there to Gaylord, it's time to meet. Again, Retail Now is where the industry meets. This is the premier event with a combination of an expo hall where you get to choose from like 200-something vendors that you're going to be able to see there, right? It's one-stop shopping for VARs and ISVs. Then also great education, like Kathy mentioned, a couple dozen education sessions that we have available for executives, for up-and-coming leaders, for folks in sales, for folks who are more in your operations side of the business as well. And then again, the best networking possible, where we have the receptions, we have the education sessions. And again, Retail Now is called Where the Industry Meets for a reason, because of everybody who attends this year after year as well. So again, register, book and meet, and then we would love to see you at Retail Now. All right, it's time to get to questions. We did receive several questions from registrants prior to this event, so we have some of those that we can answer for you, and then we're getting a whole bunch of them coming in right now as well. So let's dive into those. Kathy, Ashley, you guys ready to field some questions?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right, here we go. We're all stretched out and ready to go. So first question comes from John at iTech Services, and he says, is attendance back to volume pre-pandemic? And so I'll take that one first, and then Ashley, I want to get your perspective, because we just attended some events. I'd say the short answer to that is yes. You know, it's hard to predict exactly what's going to happen at the event, which is 100-something days from now, but all the trade shows that we've gone to and then the partner conferences, those are all back to right in the neighborhood of where they were from a pre-pandemic level. Like Ashley mentioned, we were just at the Restaurants Canada Show up in Toronto. They had their biggest show ever. NRF was earlier this year, and they were snapped back to normal where they were a year ago, because they were in the middle of Omicron. It was sparsely attended. It was almost like a ghost town in there, but it was just like back to normal than it was before. So if we're not at pre-pandemic levels, it's very much in the neighborhood, and that's why, as Ashley said earlier, you know, usually And that's why, as Ashley said earlier, you know, usually we get 1,500 plus attendees. We're anticipating at least that many, maybe in the neighborhood of 1,700 for Retail Now. Ashley, again, you've been traveling. How would you answer John's question here?
Yeah, I would agree. And even with, you know, just coming off of the Restaurants Canada event that we were just at and the session that we hosted, we've been doing that now for a little over five years. And this year we had the highest attendance that we've ever had at that event. The other shows that I've been going to, same, same thing, you know, people are showing up. They, they need to make these connections. They need to be ahead of the curve. And then also it, just in the community events and calls and things that we're doing, we're, we're seeing record numbers for those that folks are, you know, getting out in person and then also making sure that they're staying connected and engaged all throughout the year as well. So I would say we are, are at and trending above where we were pre pandemic.
Yeah, shows are back in general. And then from an RSPA perspective, we've had tons of momentum in 2022, heading in here to 2023. Our Inspire event was, most people that we ever had attend an event, an Inspire event in Hawaii. And then the Canadian event that we just had, had record attendance. So yeah, I feel like I should give the stock, you know, thing, you know, past performance is not indicative of future, but that's for the trend is heading for sure. So actually Christina asked this question, and if you want to take this. She says, when is the booth design submission deadline? How would you answer that question, Ashley?
Yeah, great question. So we don't have a formal deadline for the booth design. But what I will say Christina, or for any of our other exhibitors, feel free to reach out to myself or to the membership at go rsp.org box and let us know. Usually the questions are, are things that we want to make sure that we shore up. Or how tall is your booth? Is it impeding in anybody else's space? And those are real quick things that we can work with you on and even work on ideas if we need to make some adjustments. So just give us a call or shoot us an email and let's talk through that. A great question.
Great. Thank you. And then we also have a couple of questions here from Ji Young. Ji Young, I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly. And so Ashley, if you want to take this one, she says, I missed the bring one more offer part. From my understanding, exhibitors are given four passes as a default. Does that mean if an exhibitor purchases another pass for the fifth member, then the sixth member will get a free pass and the code for the offer has been sent? Is that correct? I think there's some parts of that that are not correct, Ashley, right? Because the number of passes that you get depends on how big your booth is from an exhibitor standpoint. Can you talk about Ashley, bring one more for an exhibitor standpoint? And then from a, a normal attendee walking the show floor, a VAR who's walking the show floor?
Correct. So let, let's talk through the exhibitor example first. So it does depend, the number of passes included with your booth depend on the size, right? So if you have a 10 by 10 booth, you get two passes. If you have a 10 by 20, you get four. If you have a 20 by 20, you get eight. So the way that the bring one more impacts that is if you do in that example have a 10 by 20 booth, you get four passes included. The fifth pass, if you purchase by the early bird deadline would be 550 and then the sixth pass would be free. So the, the way that the example works is correct. And then if you are a reseller or a direct selling ISV and you are a member of the RSPA, your first pass that you purchase, the second pass you get for free through the bring one more program. And the codes have been shared. If for some reason you didn't get yours or you might've misplaced it or it went to somebody else in your team, just let us know. You can email us at membership@go rsp.org and we'll send you the code again, no problem.
And just to clarify, so the exhibitors have all received their codes, is that correct? But you receive a code as a VAR after you register, is that right?
Yes. And, and some VARs may have received it early on if they attended last year and took advantage of the program, but that's correct. And so if for some reason you didn't, just reach out to us and we're happy to make sure that we get you on track.
Yeah. Great. Yeah. Again, that magic email is membership@go rsp.org. Tying in with that, Kate asks a question, when does the early bird discount end?
Great question. So that ends on Friday, June the 16th.
Got it. Friday, June 16th. There we go.
It does save you a few hundred dollars. So make sure that you get those passes purchased early on.
Yeah, this isn't like some $25 discount to do that. There's a significant savings there. Kathy, we've got a question for you from Jules. Jules asks, will the balance of trade show versus education time be similar to last year? Or like years prior? And she says prior was heavier on education. Can you, can you tackle that, Kathy?
Sure. So the education time is going to be very similar to what it was last year, meaning that we have the four blocks over two days. And each of those blocks, you have an option of five sessions. Are in this format, we do not repeat sessions like we have in the past. And so that's why the bring one more comes into play. It's really important that everybody consider bringing more than one person from their organization. So you can be sure to cover all of those great education sessions. So we'll have a total of 20 breakout sessions over the course of the two days, very similar to last year.
Got it. And I think maybe why Jules thinks the, there might've been heavier education before is I think what you alluded to, Kathy. The event used to be spread out over three days. Like it started Sunday night and it stretched out into Wednesday. And based on the feedback from our members, we're, we've kind of condensed everything together, right? There were action packed days, but you only have to, you know, stay Sunday night, Monday night, and then you can get away later on Tuesday. Am I understanding that correct, Kathy? Like we're still having, education has always been, you know, central to this event and that, that tradition's continuing.
That is correct. And we're also making, we're also making the schedule easier for everybody where show floor hours are the same both days. We're getting the education in and then we're not keeping people too late into the evening.
Got it. Fabulous. And speaking of that, we have a question, Kathy, if you can take this one again. This is from Jesse at Skirlas. He says, will the expo floor be in the morning or the classes in the morning? Previous year's classes were in the morning.
Correct. Note, this year, once again, as we did last year, we'll have the show floor taking, open, taking place from 8:30 to 1:00, both Monday and Tuesday, as well as Sunday night for the welcome reception. And then all of the education will be on Monday afternoon and Tuesday afternoon.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. And again, the URL you see on the screen, go rsp.org/retailnow. You can get the general framework of the agenda currently. And then as we build out and slide in all the breakout sessions, you'll see all those details on there. But right now Jesse's, you know, question can be answered there. You'll be able to see when we do all those. So all right, a question here from Renee, and I will take this one. What email address should we forward the scam emails to? The magic email address is membership@go rsp.org. Hopefully you don't have to send us too many emails that you have people peppering you with the scam. But again, membership@go rsp.org and we will take care of it from there. Ashley, we have a question here from Jessica. And Jessica says, I'm an exhibitor at Retail Now. Thank you, Jessica, for being an exhibitor. Will there be an overview webinar for us exhibitors about what we need to know? Ashley, can you talk about the resources we have to help exhibitors?
Yeah, absolutely. So we won't have a specific call or webinar, but we do have the exhibitor resource center that we'll be sharing with everybody. And everybody should have received that already. If you haven't, we're happy to send that again. We'll be sending that out quite a bit. We use that one landing page for everything so that as updates happen, it's always live and up to date. So we'll continuously send that out between now and the event. But we are always happy to hop on a call and walk through with you what to expect and what you need in terms of your setup and ordering booths, booth setup and carpet and electrical and internet and things like that as well. So all of those things will be readily available in the exhibitor resource center, which is active today. And we're happy to resend that to you as well. But great question.
And then Ashley, can you talk about why, because some, you know, shows they do a webinar, but we do more of the, like I said, the exhibitor resource center and then one-on-one conversations with you, with Nicole Green, with Peggy Fry or member services managers. Can you talk about why we do more of the one-on-one as opposed to a webinar for all the exhibitors?
Yeah, for sure. And I think this follows the same theme with the RSPA in general, right? So not every member is the same, even though we might fall under certain groups or categories or buckets. Everybody's needs and goals are a little bit different and what they're trying to accomplish. So working with you one-on-one with more of that concierge approach is where we, we really see, you know, the best outcome for both the exhibitor and for the show and for our members. So we work with you one-on-one to understand, okay, how many people are you bringing? What are you trying to accomplish? Some folks will call us and say, hey, what are some other booth designs? Or what are some things that we, you know, you know, some things that they might need help with? So having that one-on-one conversation works really well. Because some people have, you know, booth designs that they've used at other shows. Others are brand new to exhibiting for the first time or showcasing their solutions or they're looking for something new and different. So that's why we really focus on doing the one-on-one versus the broader call for everybody.
Got it. Great, Jessica. Hopefully that answers your question. Well, I see you just posed your question here. That's very helpful. Thank you. Yeah, no, Jessica, thank you for that. Yeah, always happy to set up that call. Again, membership@go rsp.org or just connect with your member services manager. And then Ji Young asked another question, Ashley, and I think you might've answered it. I just want to be sure. She says, where can I find information about logistics and booth setup resources? Is information being updated on the event website? That's the exhibitor resource center, correct?
Correct. So that's on the event website, but that's the exhibitor resource center. And, and we're happy to send that over again. And we will be sending that out multiple times in our communications as well. But as I mentioned earlier, you know, we're happy to do those one-on-one consultations with you just to make sure you have all of the logistics and details that you need to know. And particularly if it's your first time exhibiting with us, because the show might be a little bit new or different for you.
Great. Thank you, Ashley. And keep those questions coming in. Again, we still have more to get to, but this is a time for you to, to ask your question and have it answered. Kathy, I've got one for you from Thurman. He says, will there be a card brand update on surcharging regulations for debit and prepaid cards?
Yes. So our, the RSPA General Counsel Jill Miller is going to be doing a session dedicated specifically to cash discounting and surcharging dues and don'ts. And she'll be joined in that session by several of our members who have been kind of in the trenches with, with the surcharging and the discount. And they'll also be helping to answer some of those questions. So yes, there will be a dedicated session to that.
Beautiful. Wonderful. That should be a lively conversation for sure. Thank you, Kathy. Ashley, here's a question from Nash. Nash asks, will there be a discount code for exhibitors to invite reseller attendees?
Excellent question. Yes, there will be. And this was something else that we did last year and we found tremendous success. So for every one of our exhibiting member companies, and this would have come out in the email that we sent with all of the other exhibitor resource center details and things like that. But we have what we call the VPP program. And so that is specifically designed for exhibiting vendors to be able to bring their reseller and direct ISV partners to Retail Now at a discounted price. We set every one of our exhibitors up with two complimentary passes to bring two of their partners to Retail Now at no cost. And then for the additional partners that they want to send, they can do that at a discounted rate. So we are happy to help you get set up on that. That program has worked really well over the years for folks that are looking to run an incentive campaign between now and the show. If they want to show appreciation to their top partners, to new partners, to whatever the case may be, it gives you that opportunity to help folks get to the show at a discounted price.
And again, the VPP, the vendor partner program. And the resellers continue to be the, the heart of the association. So that's why we make all these discounted opportunities available for them. So Nash, thank you for that question. Next question is here is from Joshua. And he says, why does it feel like there are so many payments providers versus POS and related technologies and very few of the larger ISVs? I'll take a crack at this one first and Ashley, I want to hear your perspective on it. So I guess first, very few of the larger ISVs. So I'm not going to name names here, but I think anybody who's been in the industry can name some of those ginormous ISVs. A lot of them just don't either have a channel program or they don't really invest a lot in their channel. Those are the folks who VARs and a lot of our ISV members are competing with. And so that's oftentimes why you don't see those folks having a huge presence at the show because the channel is not as important to them as doing direct sales. So that's, I guess, one answer to that. And then why does it feel like there's so many payments providers, there's POS and related technologies? I'm, so I don't know if this is an armchair psychologist or something like that, but there was certainly a day when you walked into Retail Now and it was like, payment company, payment company, payment company, payment company. Well, a lot of them have bought each other and a lot of, and then there's still payment companies, obviously, that have giant booths and giant presents. And, you know, when you saw the sponsor list, there's, you know, a lot of payment sponsors there. But I would say, and we just, I think Ashley mentioned earlier, you know, almost half the show floor last year was software developer companies. And a lot of those ISVs ended up, you know, having one person in the booth and one person on the show floor to find other ISVs. And so payments companies are still obviously a large part of this industry. You know, it's hard to separate POS from payments in general. But I'd say there's probably fewer payments providers. The ones who are here are obviously very influential. But I don't think it's been at the, the deficit or a reduction in POS or related companies. It might just be because those payment companies do such a great job of marketing that they're certainly the loudest, but it doesn't mean that there are fewer, you know, other services there or, or POS related. Again, tons of software developers on the show floor. So Ashley, how would you answer Joshua's question that he posed?
No, I think what you shared was on point. I'd say the other thing too, you know, we took a look at the show floor because we, we do hear this from time to time, right? That there, there seems to be a, a lot of payments folks exhibiting. When we looked at the show floor from 2022, of the 168 exhibitors, about 13% were payments companies. As Jim mentioned, nearly 50% were ISVs. And then the rest fell into the hardware or hardware slash software category distributors, folks like that. And we're continuing to see, you know, with the show floor this year, you're still going to see the dominant group on the show floor are going to be ISVs or software companies. And as you mentioned, Jim, with some of the larger ISVs that, you know, don't play in the channel or not investing in the channel as much. I will say, as I travel and as we bring on particularly new ISVs into the community, they see and understand that working through the channel is the fastest way to scale and investing in that model, you know, with these new solutions. So I think that we'll continue to, to see that trend.
Great. Thank you. We've got a question here from Barbara. It looks like she's registering right now. She says, on the registration form for country, region, where is the selection for the United States of America? I think, I'm not on there right now, but I think it might actually be under USA is how they list it, is what it is. But if you start typing in U or United, you might have to scroll down a little bit. And I've registered for a bunch of different events and that's what I usually try is sometimes it pops up first, you know, United States or Canada, but other times it's, you know, right around United Arab Emirates. But if it is not showing up under United, try USA. Kathy or Ashley, I don't know if you guys have any insights into that, but that's what I think it is. It's, it's coded in, it's USA.
It's USA.
Correct.
We want, you know, our American members to start the USA chant as they're registering for the show. So bring back 1980 Olympics memories. Maybe I'm dating myself here. All right. So this is a question first for Kathy and then the second part of it is for Ashley. Thomas asks, when will the speakers be announced? So Kathy, that's you. When do you think we'll start announcing speakers?
We will begin that process next week. We are working through finalizing everything today and tomorrow, and we will begin notifying everybody next week.
Beautiful. Fabulous. Yeah. So 100 days before the show, you're going to get all our, you know, potential attendees, RSPA members are going to get to see who that lineup is. So thank you, Kathy. And then Ashley, I think the second part of the question Thomas asks is where do we order electrical, AV, furniture, et cetera?
Yeah, absolutely. So in the exhibitor resource center, and this would've been included with the codes to register for the event. The ability to order the furniture and the carpet and that kind of stuff, you'll see the link to the GES ordering site on there. The one thing that you will see though, at the top of the exhibitor resource center is we will be opening the link very soon. We're waiting for the hotel to open that page to be able to order the electrical and the wifi. So that part's coming soon. And as I mentioned earlier, I know once you get things ordered on that exhibitor resource center, you know, definitely check that box that that part's Center, you know, definitely check that box that that part's done, but you will want to check back from time to time, because we'll keep updating that page as we get closer to the show, right? And then the next thing that you'll want to be ordering as we get closer to the show is the lead retrieval system and some of those things. So those become available a little bit closer to the show. But if there are specific questions that you have, as I mentioned earlier, just feel free to shoot us an email, pick up the phone and call us. We're happy to walk through that with you one-on-one and help identify which areas you need some help with. But great question.
Great. We've only got five minutes left, so if you have questions, now's the time to get them in. So I'm not sure, Kathy, if this is for you or if it's for Ashley. It's from Sandra. She says, can you please provide some insight into awards submissions and where we can find more information about that?
I can give it a shot. I might need some help from Chris. I believe it's located on the RSPA website, so the association website. There is a tab.
And Chris, can you speak specifically to the Vendor Awards of Excellence submission process?
Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome to the program, making a late appearance, Chris Arnold, our Director of Marketing and Strategic Partnerships.
Absolutely. No, if you go to our website and you scroll down, you'll see a link to our awards and acknowledgement section. This is where you'll see all of our past and previous winners for the Hall of Fame, H.O. Whistler, WW Lear, Year of the Award. And all these nominations are year round for our individual awards. So you can nominate anytime throughout the year, but we always make the selections based around Retail Now, where we'll acknowledge and recognize all of our winners. And then to Ashley's point, Vendor Awards of Excellence, that will take place in May, and all of those awards are voted upon by our resellers. So that will take place in May, and they will also be acknowledged at Retail Now.
Great. And we send those out through email, right? Because we go through, we make sure who's an active member. As a vendor member, we categorize them, and then we push that out via email to our members in May, correct, Chris?
That is correct.
Got it.
And Chris, similar to years past, we'll also have the ability for our vendor members, like Sandra's team and others, to be able to promote the program once it's open, correct?
That's correct. Yes, we'll give marketing toolkits for our vendors.
Great, thank you, Chris. Sandra, hopefully that answered your question. If you want more, feel free to follow up with us afterwards, or try to squeeze in another question here. We'll also let everybody know, something new that we're rolling out this year is the RSPA Next Gen 40 Under 40 Rising Stars program. So the nominations have closed for that. We received a ton of submissions, and those are going to be announced before Retail Now, but those Next Gen Rising Star leaders will be honored at Retail Now as well. So that's a cool thing that we have going on as well. Let's see if we can get Mackenzie's question in under the wire. Are APIs available for lead capture? Kathy, Ashley, do you guys want to take that? Or you want to, should we punt it to Chris again?
So once we release the lead generation capture tool, we'll be able to share specifics around the availability of APIs. But Kathy, if you want to add some color to that, I know that'll be coming down the road.
No, I don't have anything to add. Just that we'll have those details within the next few weeks.
All right, thanks, Mackenzie. Again, this is part of why we do the one-on-one, where some folks want to know about APIs and other folks aren't so much, and we clarify all those things as we're leading up to the event. All right, let's see if we can squeeze in a few more questions here. Ashley, if you want to take this first, and then Kathy. Norman asks, what are some of the key reasons VARs would find compelling to attend Retail Now 2023? That did not exist last year. That's a good one, asking about what is new this year that didn't exist last year that would be compelling for VARs?
So I'll let Kathy touch from an education standpoint, but I would say from a show floor standpoint on the exhibit hall floor, and then also for the community meetings, you know, one of the big things is every year, we, you know, our current members come and they attend. We have new folks that are joining the community all of the time. Just since last May, we will have added by the end of April, 100 new RSPA members. So those are new vendors, new ISVs, new resellers to the community. So you will have the opportunity new this year to network and engage with even more new faces than last year, right? And also being able to have that opportunity to see what new solutions are out there. I have folks that reach out on a regular basis, and one of our members just reached out this week to say, hey, what are some of the new technologies that I should, you know, make sure that I'm aware of, right? So we're always bringing to your, to our attendees, you know, new, new opportunities to partner, to connect, to keep that growth mindset moving forward as the world changes around us and your customer needs change for you to help you stay ahead of that curve. So Kathy, I'll let you touch a little bit on the education piece of it.
Thanks. So just building off of your comment around, you know, 100, 100 new members, approaching 100 new members, that means lots of new faces on stage, lots of new perspectives that we didn't have last year for the education sessions, and just more opportunity for people to, you know, learn and hear from all different types of companies as we continue to grow and, you know, add diverse companies. So from the education front, you know, really fresh new faces.
Great, thank you for that. And let's try to squeeze in one more question before the top of the hour. Amit asks, how can we learn more about sponsorship opportunities? Well, Amit, thank you for the question. Ashley, can you talk about that?
Yeah, absolutely. So we do have a few remaining Retail Now sponsorship opportunities specific to the event. So feel free to reach out to our membership@gorspa.org email address. We're happy to share what opportunities are available still, and would love to, again, just like we talked about earlier, it's a personalized approach. We want to learn more about what you're hoping to accomplish and then help you make the best decision on how to get that visibility.
Great, thank you, Ashley. Well, we are at the top of the hour. No time for any more questions at this point. So we'll wrap things up for this Retail Now 2023 Town Hall. I think you can see now why our team is so excited about the event with all the great things that have happened at past Retail Now, so we'll continue to carry over, and all the new things that are going on this year. It's so great to always get our community together in one spot, again, for networking, for education, and for seeing the best that's available in technology. So, all right, well, thank you again for everybody who contributed and participated, and thanks, everybody for listening. We look forward to seeing you at Retail Now 2023, July 30th through August 1st, at the Gaylord Palms in Orlando. It's where the industry meets. Thanks again for listening. We hope to see you soon in Orlando.